I call this regular meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for November 9, 2022. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Yes, here.
Barbo? She had the zoom call. Counselor Barbo, can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Bona?
Here.
Harpen?
Here.
Obasahan?
Here.
Oleskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. And the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
I abstain.
Bona?
Just for clarification, we're approving the minutes from September 27.
Twenty-seventh, yep.
Right, okay. Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Hearing of the visitors, would anyone wish to address the council on an agenda item? Please approach the microphone, name and address for the record. Yep. Two minutes, no personal attacks.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinzy Street, I'd like to speak on 12-157, 12-188, 12-191, and 12-157. I'd like to congratulate the four firefighters from graduating from the firefighter academy. Good job, guys. And on the tax rate, it's going down, but the assessment went up. And I don't think it's going to save the taxpayers any money. This is just juggling the figures. And also, I'd like to thank Counselor Shade for bringing up the rules for garbage to the Department of Health. And I hope they let the public speak at that meeting. And also, if you're serious, Mayor, about the parking, then hire a full-time parking meter person, like they have in Pittsfield. We have several police cars that are not being used, and you could use that as a patrol car and patrol the whole city. And that position could pay for itself, because parking fines are from $15 to $300. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on an agenda item? Hearing none. I'm going to open a public hearing. Council Paper 8717-41, Mayor's Communication. I'm sorry. We're going to do the National Grid one first. Council Paper 12,187, A Petition Granting National Grid Permission to Reect and Maintain a Pole and Wires on South State Street. Do you want to tell?
I'm Michael Tatro, I'm representing National Grid. So Verizon's built a new cell tower on State Street down by the gravel bed, and they just -- we need to set a few new poles along that road to bring power to the new cell tower.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in the public wish to address, to speak during the public hearing? You have two minutes. Okay. Hearing none. Did any of the counselors have anything to say on this topic? Okay, then I will move on to the next subject, thank you. We're going to vote on that inside of the council meeting and not at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Mayor's Communication, Council Paper 8717-41, Mayor's Communication, 111 to the public hearing to set the tax classification for the fiscal year 2023. Mayor, do you want to do your presentation?
Sure, thank you, Counselor Blackmer. Can you hear me, Mr. Cardamino?
Yes.
Okay. Counselors Harpen and Barbo, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, but I can't see anything, so please have patience.
No, no problem, no problem. So, good evening. Tonight, I'm here with Assessor Jessica Linkort to present to you the fiscal year 23 tax classification. This presentation is an abbreviated form of what you all received in your packets. But the purpose of this presentation is, one, to talk about process, and, two, to talk about the details behind the valuations that drive and set the tax rate. Before we dive into the presentation, I want to focus on and express that I'm very, very cautious and aware of keeping North Adams an affordable community for the residents, while also wanting to be welcoming to both businesses who operate here currently and those we hope to attract. Overall, the tax rate for both commercial and resident rates went down, but we want to be sure everyone understands that assessments have gone up, which Mr. Cardamino did know. Thank you for helping me, Mr. Cardamino. With this, we're very focused on minimizing the impact for both residents and commercial businesses while trying to rebuild municipal services to better serve all of you. Did you go to the next slide, Dave? And if at any time you can't hear me, just let me know, okay? So, the goal for tonight, and this basically is for the public's benefit that's here in the gallery, the goal for tonight is to adopt the tax levy percentages and set the residential factor for fiscal year 2023. So this isn't just a game, this isn't a numbers game, this is a very analytic process that we go through that's required by Chapter 40, Section 56, and also approved by the Department of Revenue under the Division of Local Services. Values are based and determined by our Board of Assessors. I'd like to thank Greg Betty and Pat Wall for being here tonight, along with Assessor Linkort. They work diligently all year long with the Department of Revenue, as well as our consultant, to ensure that we're capturing as much value as we can in our properties. And then the last step is for the city council to vote. So, we do all of our legwork during the year. We set the values, we send them to the Division of Local Services, we get a preliminary approval, and then we come here tonight and ask the city council to pass a classification. Next slide, please. So again, the process is to determine the value of each property set by the Board of Assessors. Then we classify all of our real property, and that is done by the Board of Assessors, specifically Assessor Linkort. At that time, we also submit all of our values to the Division of Local Services, which they scrutinize quite a bit, and that is all done by the assessing department. We determine the minimum residential factor for the city, which is approved by the Department of Local Services, not here in the city. We hold a public hearing tonight, and then we set the fiscal year 2023 tax rate, and then we move forward with the tax collection process. Next slide, please. So the residential factor establishes what the shift will be. North Adams has a split tax rate, as you all know. We have residential and commercial, industrial, personal, which we refer to as CIP. We also talk a lot about CIP as Capital Improvement Plan, not to be confused. So for fiscal year 2023, we can use the levy and go up in the shift up to 175%. Next slide. So where did we start? We use fiscal year 2022 as a base. So as you all probably remember, we set the shift, or the Bernard administration set the shift, at 168%, with a residential factor of .7928. And we had rates for residential of $18.53 per thousand, as well as 39.26 for commercial, industrial, and personal. Next slide. So the team with the support and recommendation and approval of the Department of Local Services is recommending a shift of 1.75, or 175% for fiscal year 2023. Again, our focus was to leverage it so it had the minimum impact on residents, as well as not outpricing commercial. So with that, you would set a residential factor of .7966, and that would lead to a tax rate of $17.46 for residential, which is a reduction of about a dollar from last year, and a commercial, industrial, personal property rate of $38.35, which is approximately a reduction of 91 cents. Next slide. So at this point, that was about the process, and I know I kind of flew through that kind of quickly, but I really want Jessica to focus tonight on the valuation and what is going on with the market that's driving some of our assessments. Assessor Linkort?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jessica Linkort, I'm your assessor for the city of North Adams. We're all here tonight because nobody won the Powerball on Monday. I'm here to talk a little bit about what the values are doing this year. If you look at the chart up on the wall, you can see that the residential values have been increasing steadily since fiscal year 19. Once again, they are going up this year. This is not because I'm trying to trick the taxpayers or be mean to the taxpayers, it's because our sales data analysis tells me that I have to increase the values. My job is to value properties based on 100% full and fair cash value in an open market. So basically, what you'd pay for a house with a willing buyer and a willing seller. This year, single-family homes are going up about 15%. Two-family homes, about 9%. The three families really didn't change that much, based on our analysis. The four-to-eight families are going up about 7% in value, and the multi-family homes, eight-plus families, are going up about 6%. Yard items, such as, you know, garages, pools, fences, we had to increase those by about 20% due to construction costs. Open space, you will see that there's nothing in the open space box, that's because we don't have anything in open space. Anything that's vacant land, we tend to put in residential, commercial, or industrial, based on whatever it's used for. Commercial values this year actually stayed stagnant, based on our analysis. You will see a decrease in the value, and that's not because of the analysis, it's because we actually granted seven commercial abatements in fiscal year 22, which reduced the value. We had a commercial property that went exempt, so that took that off the rolls. And also, I think we had a couple commercial properties go down just because of the conditional loan. Industrial, same thing as commercial. The values stayed pretty stagnant, but those did go down a little bit, because we did grant an abatement on one, and another one went down because of the condition. Personal property values did go up. We have 18 new personal property accounts this year. We also have 1.3 million in increased value because of 504 growth, which are utilities. So Mass Electric and Berkshire Gas had some growth in that department. Next slide, please, David. This is our fiscal year 2023 tax-based growth summary. This is basically new growth. So this year, we had about 4.1 million in new growth. I thought it was a little lackluster. I think that has to do a lot with construction costs. I have 31 permits that I actually went out to do inspections on, and I have to revisit next year because the projects weren't started yet, so I'm hoping those numbers boost up a little bit next year. But overall, because of the 4.1 million in growth, we have $110,776 in tax revenue. David? Thank you. So, based on the 1.75 shift, which is the maximum we could go, that means that would have the least impact on the residents. You're looking at your tax, average tax bill increase of about $294.56 a year. It's about $24 a month, 81 cents a day. I know nobody likes to hear that, but that is based on the values. We have the single-family residential value up there. We take that and divide that by the parcel count, which comes out to the average residential value of $194,713 and change. Some of you don't have houses that are valued at that much, so your bill probably won't go up the $294 if you're not valued that much. If you have a question about your assessment, not about your tax bill, but your assessment, feel free to come and ask me anytime, that's why I'm there, we can work together. Bob, you can come in anytime, you know that. Next slide, please. So, this is an abbreviated version of our options table. The options table is something that we get in our Gateway software, it's issued by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, and it tells you how much you can shift the tax rate, starting with a single tax rate, which would be 2192 this year, and we don't have a single tax rate, all the way to the maximum shift of 1.75. I didn't want to give you 75 different options to look at, because we could have not crammed it onto this chart. So, I did the last four shifts, 1.72, all the way to the 1.75, which is the one we're going with this year. So although the residential values in our city make up almost 79% of our total value, because of the shift, the residential class is going to be paying about 62.6% of the tax levy. Open space, 0%, because we don't have anything in the open space category. With the 1.75 shift, the commercial will be paying about 21.87% of the total tax levy. The industrial class will be paying 4.56% of the class levy, and personal property, 10.89%. David? This is our tax rate comparison from last year. You'll see that the tax rate is going down. It's going down because the assessments did go up. Like I said, I'm not trying to trick anybody, I'm just trying to do my job, and if you have a question about your assessment, feel free to come and ask me. David? And to reiterate what the mayor said, our CIP shift is going to be 175%, or 1.75, which is our max, we cannot go any further than that. Residential factor will be .7966, and residential and open space tax rate will be $17.46 per thousand, which is down from last year, and $38.35 for commercial, industrial, and personal And this is our tax rates for the last decade or so. You will see that they were a little lower, then they went up, and they're going back down again, because our assessments have been increasing steadily. I don't know what next year's going to bring, or the year after, I never usually know. But like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to come and ask me. If you have a question about your tax bill, come and ask me. Are we doing discussions and questions now, or are we doing it towards the end of the meeting?
Couple of things. One, your 1.75 is your recommendation.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Because we actually can vote anything we want.
Yes.
Up to 1.75.
Yes, 1.75 is the next.
I just want to clarify that.
But that is our recommendation, because that will have the least impact on the residents.
And the biggest impact on the businesses.
Yes.
And it's gone up. Okay. You don't have a chart, like, of the CIP for the last several years, do you?
I don't, but I can always get you one if you need one.
That doesn't do any good tonight. Thank you. Let the public speak, they have two minutes, because it's a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to make a comment can do so, and then, if not, then we'll move on to the counselors. Mr. Cardamino, go ahead.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinzy Street. As you know, we have a lot of nonprofits in this city that don't pay any taxes. Is there any way that the city can assess them for, like, fire, police, water, sewer, lights, that the city has, would he plow the streets and everything else, sweep the streets for them, clean the sidewalks? Is there any way we could assess them for the use of our labor?
I don't know. I'll have to ask the city's attorney, because I don't know what we're legally allowed to do. I do know that if I tried to assess nonprofits and they got a tax bill, they'd probably take me to the appellate tax board, and the appellate tax board would spank me and say, "No, I can't do that." Most of our nonprofits and our exempt properties do pay water and sewer bills, though, because they're not exempt from that, so they do get billed from that. But I mean, I'd be happy to talk to the city's attorney about what I can and cannot do, in terms of assessing them something. Anything for you, Bobby.
Okay.
Counselors? Counselor Bona?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, and Mayor, through the chair, Mayor, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe nonprofits actually pay 100% of the sewer rate, is that correct? Is there, it seems like I remember hearing something about that.
Yes.
So unlike residents and commercial properties that do pay taxes, their percentage is...
60, 70, something like that, I think.
But nonprofits do pay 100% sewer rate, so that is actually one thing we benefit there. The other thing is, how are we doing calculating, so we definitely believe we have an increase in second home buyers? And I believe that we can tax the property that's in the house, and is that at a commercial rate? Is that correct?
Yes.
How are we doing evaluating and taxing that? Because, again, I believe our second home buyers are, have increased a lot.
So what I do, I go through our deeds every year, at the beginning of the year, and by looking at them and what their mailing addresses are, I can usually determine if it's a second home or not. And I send them a form of list, so they can list their personal property, and I will send them a personal property tax bill. If they don't send it back, then I'm going to do a site visit, and I'm going to see what they have. I will say most of the second homeowners don't have too much. It's usually just furniture, dishes, things like that. But I do bill them for personal property, so I am on top of that.
So do we, and I'm not asking at the moment, but you have a sense, if I came to you later, of how many second homeowner buyers we have, that we are taxing for that?
I want to say about 20 to 25.
That's it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that seems low. It just seems low, but...
It seems a little low, but it's also hard, because sometimes people will buy property, then they sell property, if they're here, they're not here. So, I mean, I do try to keep track of it, but...
Okay.
It's not, it's not a perfect science.
All right. And then, you know, it was 20%, it seemed like it was higher, I did see where the residential assessments went from 164,000 up to 198. That's the average home now is selling.
That's the average, so that's...
The average home now in North Adams is selling for about 200,000. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Oleskowitz?
With the 91 cent, with the 91 cent reduction in CIP, does that still hold, North Adams, with the highest commercial tax rate in the state?
I don't know, I tend to not compare ourselves to other places in the state, because, you know, we all know that the eastern part of the state definitely differs from the western part of the state, but I can definitely look into that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair. Are properties that are used for Airbnb services assessed for personal property?
It depends. If it's coming up as being a second home, yes, they will be assessed for personal property. When people buy a property as an Airbnb, they don't register with me, they don't call me up and tell me, "This is an Airbnb, please come tax me." So, it's kind of a mystery sometimes, I have to do my own digging and figure out what's going on. But yes, I will do that.
Okay, because I know they are supposed to register with the state to pay taxes, and technically, they're not living there, so they're not first homes, unless it's, you know, a multi-use duplex or something like that, so it's another stream where we might be losing out on, if we're not assessing that properly.
And like I said, I try to keep on top of it, try to decipher by looking at the deeds and mailing addresses, you know, where these people are. Generally, if they have a mailing address that's out of town, then that tells me it's an Airbnb or a second home, so I will bill them for personal property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want, do you have last year's CIP rate?
Last year's CIP, 1.68.
Okay. So we're going from 1.68 to the max?
Yes.
After we spent years trying to get it down a little?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, anyone else just before that hasn't asked a question? Okay. Back to you.
That's where I was going to go next, Counsel Blackmer, is I think that's where some disappointment is, our commercial rate is more than double a resident. When you, again, look across the state, and while I know you said you don't compare, people do compare. And it does, as it has, I mean, you go back, and at one point, when we did split, those rates were pretty close, and then they have done this, and done this, and done this. And what people don't realize is every time your residential tax might go up a dollar, your commercial is going up two or three dollars, and it does put an unwelcoming message out there, in my opinion, for businesses, especially as property values go up. It does look from those numbers, the residential values have increased more than the commercial values, but part of that, as you also said, may have lost some commercial properties to nonprofits. You know, the Price Chopper was a big building, you know, NAFSS building, you know, and you keep hearing sometimes these, you know, health facilities that will take over a commercial property, and they, they go off our tax roll, and we have to make those up. That is something I'm not thrilled looking at, is as Counsel Blackmer said, we've been trying to, it's never going to go like this, but, I mean, there are other communities, North Hampton, I believe, has a single rate, and we're never going to get there, but what happens is, when you're doing an expense on a building, and I've talked to people who have commercial properties, you know, a 2x4 here costs the same as a 2x4 in North Hampton. So, certain machinery, office equipment, things like that, while some of that's taxed a little different, but a million dollars of material here is a million dollars of material in North Hampton, but yet, we're taxing double here on that than we are in North Hampton. It's just not, to me, a business-friendly message to keep having that separation. We've been trying to pinch it a little, but basically, this sort of throws, throws that all out. So, it looks happy for the residents, but a lot of times, when the residents say, "Where are the jobs?", that also correlates with, well, what can we do to make businesses more attractive, so, thank you.
And I understand your concerns, I do. I mean, the only positive thing that I guess I can say towards, you know, commercial, you're a business owner, is that, like I said, the commercial values stayed pretty stagnant this year, and that's because the commercial tax rate is going down by about 91 cents, the commercial taxpayers are still going to be saving money this year. Not much, but a little bit. Like I said, I don't know what the future is going to bring, you know, I hope we can make things a little more even, but given, you know, the unrest right now in the world, gas prices are through the roof, groceries are through the roof, residents are really struggling, we just kind of felt that the 1.75 maximum shift would be the best option this year.
Continue with that. Businesses, keep in mind, commercial rates, electric is more, everything commercial rate is double, triple, and when you see businesses close, too, you know, it does affect both sides.
Counsel Harpen would like to speak, so Counsel Harpen, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Yes.
We can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so through the chair to the mayor and the assessor, either of you will answer, I do have a few comments to make, and also, just a question to start off with, is the commercial rate, or the values went down about 1.6 million, and the industrial went down about 300,000. So, in total, it's about 2 million between the commercial and the industrial. Valuations went down. Is, I'm sorry, I didn't see the slides, and I'm trying to hear as well as I can. Is that all around commercial properties, or is that due to one or two...
Um, part of that is because we had, uh, granted seven commercial abatements in fiscal year 22. So that was a reduction in value of 869,800 dollars, um, in the commercial side. Uh, we also settled, uh, an appellate tax board case. Somebody took us to the appellate tax board about their value. Um, so that was about 135,600 dollar reduction. Uh, we had a property that went exempt, so we lost 333,400 dollars in value there on the commercial side. Um, there was also another one, two actually due to the condition. Uh, one went down about 255,400 dollars in value due to the condition. Um, and another one went down about 335,600.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Um, my, my other issue is I, I just had a question about the personal property tax as well.
Yeah.
Um, it, I think I, I heard you say it went up $3 million and that was basically due to Berkshire Gas and Utilities. Um, last year, I believe the personal property went down substantially from the year before, uh, about $5 million. Um, I'm wondering if we have recouped any of that, um, from, any of that valuation, that, that huge drop from 2021 to 2022. Um, I never really understood what that drop was. I know you weren't here and you might not have the answer, but I'm just wondering if, if any of that was, was, has fallen back into our, um, personal property valuations.
Well, we do have 18 new personal property accounts this year, um, you know, which would account for our increase in the personal property valuations. Um, I, I can't say why it dropped from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22 because I wasn't here. Um, but businesses open and close all the time, so that definitely could be a factor of why it went down between those years.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and then just my final comment is, um, I, I think it's great that I, I, you know, our valuations are going up, um, that is great and, and the rates are going down. But, but you know, we are still putting, um, an increase into the, the households, which we have been doing, um, on homeowners, uh, for the last, since I've been on the council, the shift has always been, um, more favorable to the commercial industrial side. Um, and, and this year I, I would really advocate even more because the residential side, uh, valuations went up so substantially and the commercial and the industrials, um, went down. So since their valuations went down, um, you know, the, the, the shift, uh, isn't going to be as much of a burden on them as it would, uh, the residential. So, um, I, I agree with the shift being, uh, in favor of the homeowners and, um, that's, that's how I feel. Uh, I, uh, pretty much voted that way, uh, each time I've, I've been here every year. So I will continue to, to vote in favor of the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Anyone else? I move to close the public hearing. Um, let's move on to the agenda. Actually, what I like to do is move the firefighters swearing in up and do that now so that they can, I'm sure they don't want to watch the rest of this. And if they do, they're wel, you're all welcome to stay. He's going to have the deputy mayor Dante come and join me. Oh, let me announce the, let me call out the paper. Um, where did it go? Uh, where is it? Council Paper 12,188, Mayor's Communication 108, requesting time to publicly swear in firefighters into service with North Adams Fire Department. Without objection, I'll file the communication and mayor. Sorry, I broke my mic here. Okay. Good evening. Tonight is my honor, truly my honor, to present firefighters Morgan Gadel, Mitchell Misali, Rainan Rothman, and Michael Jordan for swearing in as full-time firefighters with the City of North Adams. All firefighters completed, successfully completed the Massachusetts Fire Academy and graduated on October 28th. Morgan, could you come up?
Who am I swearing?
Yep, right in there. And I'm going to ask the chief and the deputy to join Morgan. Morgan Gadel is from Clarksburg and a member of the Clarksburg Fire Company, or was a member of the Clarksburg Fire Company, we stole her. She has an associate's degree in fire science and graduated from the academy with firefighter one and two certification. Morgan is the first female firefighter in the history of the North Adams Fire Department. Woo! Mitchell, could you join the team? This is Mitchell Misali from North Adams. He graduated from the academy with firefighter level one, two certification. He's the proud father of three beautiful boys, one of which is my deputy mayor Dante. Rainan? Rainan Rothman from Rockland, Mass. Also graduated from the academy with firefighter one and two certification. And Rainan is also a U.S. Navy veteran. Thank you for your service. And last but not least, Michael Jordan, please join the team. Originally from Totten, Mass. and from Vernon, Connecticut, at his time of hire, he is a past member of the Vernon Fire Club. Firefighter Jordan is firefighter one certified in Connecticut and recently became certified in Massachusetts for level one and two. And firefighter Jordan got married while he was in the academy.
Congratulations.
I have to say, this group has been fantastic. Um, I feel like I went to the academy with all of you. Um, we had our weekly little chat groups on Sunday evening. Um, I don't know if you miss them or not, but I do. So with that, all of you, I'm very proud of you. As you take your oath, I ask you to promise to be concerned for others at all time, that you always have the willingness to help those in need, that you have the strength to bear whatever burdens might be placed upon you, and that you have the strength of mind and body to deliver safety to all of the residents of the City of North Adams. I now like to ask Clerk Valiers to come forward to administer the oath.
You can all raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, I swear.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
And coming upon me.
And coming upon me.
As a permanent firefighter.
As a permanent firefighter.
In the City of North Adams.
In the City of North Adams.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Requirements.
Requirements.
The Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm also excited because I'm going to have my first fire department basketball team. Thank you. Thank you all for your...
Thank you, Rick.
So I will call a two-minute recess while people who don't want to watch sausage being made can leave. Or at least go home and watch it from the... So, let's go on to, I'm moving things around here. Um, without objection, I'm going to move Council Paper 12,187 up, an order granting national grid permission to erect and maintain a pole and wires on South State Street. Uh, okay. So, um, a motion to order, I'm sorry, what is it again? A motion to grant the order, I'm sorry. I was just trying to...
No move.
Second.
Okay. Counsel Wilkinson, Counsel Sapienza. Any more discussion, any other questions? This is a rule call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Olefskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. You're all set.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Okay, I'm back. Okay, now we're on to Council Paper 8717-41, an order authorizing the mayor to establish the fiscal 2023 tax levy for residential open space, commercial and industrial and personal property. Um, do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Bona?
Yeah. Um, at this point, I will not support this. Um, I explained why previously. Um, I'm not, uh, I, I feel a compromise would be that the percentages could be equal. Uh, again, when we have talked about a shift in the past, uh, it's not equal. Even when we have reduced, uh, a half a percent, a quarter percent, a three-quarter percent on the commercial rate, it is still typically two to three times more when it comes down to the dollar than it is on the residential side. Um, you can look at it and you can say that the commercial rates have decreased in value, but that is not because of the individual commercial properties that are still standing. That is because we have lost some commercial properties. So this puts the burden even more on the ones that are less, that are left still there. Um, so every time a commercial property, um, falls into the nonprofit status, that will put the burden, not also on the residents, but I don't feel the reason to increase the percentage on the commercial rate because the overall commercial values have dropped is beneficial to the commercial properties that are still standing. Commercial properties which include and rent to many small businesses, um, they have clearly struggled as much if not more than residents. During COVID, many did not get extra checks or extra benefits. Um, and we have, and we, to this day, we still see them closing a little at a time. So I would only support this as a compromise if the percentages were equal. Um, um, I have supported the shift in the past and, and I understand, you know, and appreciate Counsel Harpen when she has stood on the other side supporting the residential and she has voted against, um, when the shift went the other way. Um, I, as a counselor, have always promoted myself as trying to be out there for pro-business, which is something I think this community continues to need to show we are welcoming to businesses. Um, and, uh, because everything else, when it comes to commercial, from electric to properties to buying stuff, um, is higher, um, they're always paying more, no matter how small the mom and pop individual business they may be, up to, um, you know, ones that may have hundreds of employees. But in this community, most of our commercial properties are affecting small business owners, not, um, Walmart chains. So I will not support this at that, for, for that reason. Thank you.
Counsel Wilkinson.
I have to agree with Counsel Bona. Um, one of the statistics they mentioned was that the industrial assess, uh, that industrial values as well as commercial values have not risen. Might it be because we charge so much for commercial tax rate versus the residential one? Um, so we were, we were making real progress in, in the other direction and we're going, we're going all in the wrong direction now by going to the maximum. Um, it's great for the residential homeowner, I guess, and I'll probably take a hit, hit for that, but it's just not fair to the commercial side.
Counsel Shade, then Counsel Sapienza, then Counsel Obasahan.
Yes, thank you. Um, understanding where we're at right now as a community when it comes to finances from both a business standpoint and a residential standpoint, prices are affecting us all. Inflation's out of control. It's, it's, it's a problem everywhere. It's, it's not just a North Adams problem and unfortunately inflation isn't something that a local city council or a local government can really... can really change. I agree with Counselors Bona and Wilkinson that putting the shift of the burden to business owners is harmful. And changing the rate directly to a full max out, put everything back towards the businesses, hurts our chances of bringing in new industry, hurts our chances of bringing in new careers and good-paying jobs, and has more long-term implications. However, I also agree that if we were to stick with the rate we had previously, it would be a bit of a burden on the residential rate. I do think that there should be a compromise somewhere where we don't go to the full max, but we do move the percentage back just a little based on what's happened over the past few years and based on inflation. But I wouldn't and don't support moving it all the way to a max rate. And I think, long-term, it hurts more than it helps. Thank you.
Counselor Sapienza.
Yes. You know, it's very tough to own a business, you know, in the city. And with a higher tax burden, I think that's going to discourage more and more businesses. And we need our businesses. We need the businesses to thrive in this area. Conversely, if the businesses thrive, so don't the residents. There is more opportunities. They create more jobs. They create more opportunities. And by shifting this to the max towards the residents, I am a homeowner and I would like to see my taxes go down as low as they could, but it just isn't fair. And I agree with Counselor Shade that maybe a compromise somewhere in the middle, maybe the 1.72% level would be, or the 1.72 would be more in tune with the way we should go right now. I know previous administrations have been trying to reduce the shift as much as possible and then cranking it the other way just seems to be too, you know, too extreme. So I would agree with a middle compromise and give the businesses in our community a chance to be able to thrive and to be able to grow, especially in this inflationary period that we're in right now. Thank you.
Counselor Obasahan.
So, yeah, I don't really have much to say because I think I'm going to just repeat what a bunch of other counselors have said. I also agree with Counselor Shade, Counselor Bona, that if we are looking for our economy to thrive, I think that there has to be some middle ground. So I'm also going to agree with what other counselors have said today.
Counselor Harpen, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would just mention, you know, a couple of years ago, the issue was with the commercial initiative was that it was at $40, which was high. And it is a number that, you know, someone looks at and could definitely be discouraged by. So when I look at the chart here of what the rates were year to year, in 2020, it was $40.66 for the commercial industrial. And I could see where that can cause some sticker shock, for sure. And I understand the point on that. But here in 2023, the CIP is $38.35, and the residential open space is $17.46. So we are closing the gap over the last few years, you know, for the commercial side and the industrial side. My second thought on this is, you know, over the last five years going through this, I have never once received a call from any business stating that this shift was out of control, or the tax rate was out of control, or complaining about the tax rate. Never once in five years have I have never received a call. And I don't believe anybody, any business has ever come into any of these meetings speaking on it. So that indicates to me that I'm really not sure how much the business community is concerned on this.
Counselor Barbo, do you have anything to add?
I think I should echo what everyone else has said tonight. I think there's balance points on both sides, and I don't support this at this time.
Thank you. So, Counselor Shade.
Yes, I also just want to add one more thing. We have the lowest residential tax rate of any city in Massachusetts and of most communities, and one of the highest industrial and commercial tax rates. We have to have a better balance if we truly want better jobs and careers available to residents here. And again, I think it's really important that we find balance when we're setting this rate and not go from one extreme to another. So, thank you.
So, Mayor?
So, I get all your perspectives about the commercial and Keith, I agree with you. We want to grow our commercial base. And we need to be competitive and we need to be attractive and we need to be competitive. I understand what you're saying number-wise, okay? The people in this community are hurting. The little lady that's 95 years old and is trying to stay in her house is hurting. And I respect all of your opinions very much, and that is something that we can work towards together. I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to examine that. But right now with the data points that we have, we are focused on the residents. And there are so many options out there, in a sense, for commercial businesses in the sense of how they operate their house, or how they operate their business and their staffing. Staffing's horrible, we all know that. But the people of this community, which includes our business owners, are struggling. And this tax classification is really focused on those people. I'm not saying throw out the businesses. I want businesses. I want people that have competitive jobs. But where we are right now, the shift that we projected, is really helping everyone. Counselor Bona, I understand what you're saying. I get it. But at the same time, we're faced to deal with, as Counselor Harpen said, these residents who call, who call continually, who have to make extensive payment agreements, the people that we work with, people who aren't profiting by running their houses. And I know businesses are struggling, and I'm not anti-business, but I'm definitely pro these residents, and I know all of you are too. You have my word, we can work towards being more competitive with our CIP. We can work towards being more attractive and being more business-friendly. But what are we going to do for our residents?
What are we going to do for our businesses?
We're going to work with them. We're going to work all together. No, that's okay.
I was out of order.
No, you're fine.
Okay, excuse me, so...
But that's... I listen to you. You listen to me, but that's my...
I understand that. I also kind of, you know, we got this, the paperwork was late because of the election, et cetera. I know, you got all your numbers in.
My paperwork was in on Wednesday.
I understand that.
So the paperwork was not late.
I would have...
And somebody could have called. I just want to clarify that, Counselor Blackmer. My paperwork was in Wednesday morning.
Okay, well, we also don't have to vote on this. We can refer this to finance. I mean, I'm saying I would have liked to have had a little bit more conversation about this, other than sometimes we've referred things to finance, but that's fine. We have data here, and I would have preferred to have some history of not just the residential numbers, like what, you know, you put it up there, but we didn't get the presentation. We got some of these slides that didn't include that. I also, you know, we went from, in 2018, the council voted, the mayor presented 1.73, the council voted 1.71. And last year, we were at 1.68. I think going from 1.68 to 1.75 is a huge jump. And I, like everyone else has stated, pretty much, am more comfortable with 1.72. Now, I was going to suggest that we have two options. We can either vote on this, and it votes down, and we redo it, or we can withdraw the motion and do the motion changing it. But that's up to you guys what you want to do, and you can add more.
And, you know, about having more discussion, I entertain that. But not one, and I know you got it late. But literally that. But now one person called between Monday and Wednesday. Just saying. My door is always open. I always answer my phone to you. So, again, this is our proposal. This is our recommendation. But I know all of you are residential-focused, and some of your comments today, except for Counselor Harpen, make me just shake my head a little. That's all. Like you shake your head at me, so...
Counselor Bona?
Through the chair. I've always, while I am resident, I have apartments. My parents have apartments. I have business. But I've always been a counselor who have come and said that I am pro-business. And that doesn't mean to put the burden on the residents. Again, when I look at our rates, the burden is not on the residents. It's $38, almost $40 at times, on the business, and it is 17 on the residents. So the businesses are paying more than twice. And again, a lot of these businesses are little ladies. There are little ladies who have businesses. If they are renting from a commercial property, they are going to get hit with it through their rent. And one of the things I hear from all residents is, why are there not more businesses? And again, then they'll say, well, the rents are high. Well, rents, again, are part of paying gas, paying electric, paying property taxes and things like that. That all goes into what a rent is. I don't feel why we can pick and say there's this percentage that are hurting. There are. And a lot of them that are hurting, there are also assistance for. But I think a community that, as we don't have the businesses today that we had 20 years ago, that we had 40 years ago, I don't think the city has gone great in that direction of attracting more business. And this, again, it's small, but we were doing these small little chips every year. And it's still, even though we were adjusting the percentage, the commercial rate was still dollar-wise going up higher than the residential rate. Counselor Say, not to... I think I want to correct you. I don't think we have the lowest tax rate. We have one of the lowest tax bills. I think our tax rate residential is about in the middle. But bill-wise, our residential bill, as of last year, we were the 10th lowest tax bill residential out of 351 communities. The 10th lowest. The communities that were lower than us were communities that don't have sewer, that don't have police departments, that don't have schools. Beckett, Florida Mountain, they're lower than us. And look what they offer to the residents. And they have a lot of assistance from the state when it comes to highway and things like that. Those are the ones that are lower than us. For a city, we, for our tax rate, and I understand people can be hurting, but they're not going to get another community in this city, in this state, that is going to get them, give them what we do for the tax rate. There's just not another community that's even close to what we give for this tax rate. When I see people come in and their interest in the city, and these aren't all wealthy people, these are just average Joes, asking, you know, about the city and asking what the tax... When I tell them what our tax, average tax bill is, their jaw drops. They're like, that's it? That's it? You know? And not saying that necessarily means we should be higher, but comparatively so. I have a list I sent counselors a year or two years ago showing what our tax bill is and the average. And I mean, most, we're like at the bottom, and then it jumps almost double, then triple. I mean, you know, it jumps up quite a bit from other communities. We can promote ourselves as a cheap residential tax, but as you said, we have amenities and essentials and things we also have to pay for. And I don't know where residents are going to get it cheaper anywhere else in this state. Businesses can. Residents can't. So...
So who can, the city?
What's that?
So who can? Right? We all got to have a little bit of a giving.
We do, and that's why I'm not, I'm not, I agree, and I said it, and as Counselor Shade said it, and others, maybe that compromise, maybe there doesn't need to be a shift. Maybe it needs to be an equal percent, you know? Then there's no burden put on one or the other, you know, that they're paying exactly the same, the same percent. But, not percent, but the same increase. I don't know. I just don't agree with it currently is. But I also don't like it looking like we don't care about the residents. I don't think that's fair, no more than me saying you don't care about the businesses, okay?
Thank you.
But I have been appreciative of the shifts that we have done the past several years. And this, like I say, just sort of really goes far the other way. So at this point, I would, I won't make a motion yet because I see there's hands up, but I would probably suggest that this go to Finance Committee. Thank you.
We already got a motion on the table.
Okay, right, right.
Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair, first to Counselor Bona, thank you for the correction. And through the chair to the mayor. When I look at these rates and I look at what this means for the people of North Adams, unfortunately, these classifications always hurt. There's always more that's being taken from us, from the residents, from the people. There's always more that you're going to have to pay when your assessments go up. I think leaving the rate where it was would be completely irresponsible, given the inflation in our economy and the hurt that people have. I do believe that there is a compromise where we can reduce the amount and the burden on the residential scale without going all the way to the maximum limit. And it's important that we don't do that because we are now looking at a new legislation that kind of just passed a ballot question, where they're going to be raising taxes on millionaires, which many businesses might fall into that category and have to pay an extra tax on, or business owners who will have to pay that burden as well. We're looking at potentially new taxes from the state. There's always new taxes, and it's unfortunate, and people always have to pay them. But when we look at the burden and we look at balance, if we raise our commercial rates all the way back up and put it all back on the commercial businesses and we lose more businesses, the mom-and-pop stores, the restaurants that you go to frequently are paying the same amount as Walmart and McDonald's. And unfortunately, that's not something that we can change. When we talk about commercial, we're not just talking about Walmart and McDonald's and big corporations. We're talking about all the little stores that you go to visit on Eagle Street and on Main Street, and where you take your family to dinner. All of them are paying the same rate as Walmart and McDonald's. And that's not something that we can change. And I think a lot of people think commercial, they think these big, huge corporations and conglomerates. But it's not just them. It's all the mom-and-pop stores too. It's all the local businesses. It's the people who live in this community who are now paying extra as well. And I think we have to find a balance together as a community. I agree with Counselor Bona that we should have more discussion on this and find more balance. I want to hear more from residents. I want to hear more from the people as to what they feel is good and what they need from us before we make the decision. And I think we need more community input from both business owners and from residents. So I'm also in favor of sending this to Finance so we can have that opportunity to do so before we set the rate. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson, and then Counselor Sapienza.
Does the original motion have to be withdrawn before we send it to Finance?
Yes.
Who made the original motion?
I think you did.
I did, I believe.
Who was it? Did you?
Withdraw my motion to accept.
To adopt. Mayor?
Can I just make just two quick comments? And please excuse my tone. I get a little passionate about residents. Two points. We wanted to bring it to the max because we felt, yes, we were helping residents. But two, it was a year that would have the least impact on businesses because their values pretty much stayed the same. But with that, as we move forward into next year, I just want everybody to...
I just want everybody to understand, we can bring the CIP back to 1.72 or 1.68, depending on where we are with the values and where we're going with that. So I don't want anybody to think that once we go to 1.75, we're going to stay there forever. Just point of clarification.
I do want to clarify, though. I mean, we went, we brought it down. It was, you know, the 17, you know, it was 175 for a long time. And that was about, and then we brought it down in 173, 172, 171. It went to 168. We go back up to 175. And next year, maybe the values will go up, and we tweak it a little, and it's, I don't know. I just feel like, it's almost like whiplash here, going from points of 168 to 175. And I know everybody seems to be kind of liking the 172. But I know that Counselor Olefskowitz is going to withdraw his motion, and I think.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
And then I think that they're going to refer to, it sounds like it's going to get referred to Finance Committee. The only thing to keep in mind is, do we have to republish a public hearing? Do we have to have another public hearing?
I would think.
I don't think we have to have another public hearing. Because we've already had the public hearing and heard from everybody.
Wouldn't you want anybody to hear about the 1.72?
But we can change it right now, if we want to. We can, we can vote to change it. And we don't have to have another public hearing on that. And no one's, they're not here. Counselor Wilkinson.
I'm for sending it to Finance. If we just make an arbitrary vote tonight, we're making an arbitrary vote tonight so we don't have to republish and save a couple bucks. People have to have more input rather than two minutes on, on the screen. Going from one, going from 1.68 to 1.75. I know the mayor said, oh, we could always bring it down next year. Property value is going up. Let me give you a secret. Property values aren't going up next year. The market has changed, and it's totally different than it has been for the last year and a half to two years. We go, we go to 175, I guarantee you, it's going to take you 20 years to get it back down to 1.68.
Counselor Harpen is on screen. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to mention a couple of things I certainly would be for sending it to Finance. I don't think we ever have. I think it's a good idea. I would like to personally hear from some, some businesses. Like I said, I haven't heard from businesses. I get calls from, from members in the community and people that own homes and single-family homes all the time. So it, it would be good for me, in my position, to, to hear from some, some businesses. Also, I did look up what the actual tax bill was for our neighbors in Adams. And for fiscal year 2022, their single-family tax bill in Adams was 3,000, the average was $3,472. And this, in here, the mayor is proposing that the average tax in North Adams be 3,400. So we are in the ballpark amongst our neighbors in, in, in northern Berkshire. But again, that's something that we can review even further in, in Finance.
A point of order. Right now, we don't have a motion on the floor.
We don't have a motion on the floor, right.
So we're discussing without a motion. So I'll make a motion that we forward this to Finance Committee with a.
Well, actually, we didn't finish with him rescinding. He kind of whispered it in.
I rescind it.
And then the, right, but I hadn't called on him, and the mayor was speaking, so. Let's finish with this. Counselor Wilkinson had his hand raised. Okay, why don't you do that? Then we will have Counselor Olefskowitz rescind his motion.
I just wanted to comment that I understand where Counselor Harpen is coming from, that the average tax rate would be similar here than it would be in Adams. Adams has, doesn't have a split tax rate. They have a single tax rate. So comparing the two is like comparing apples and oranges.
Um, okay.
To respond to that, the, the, my response was responding to Counselor Bona, who stated that the average tax bill was, was the 10th lowest, I believe, in the state. So I went on the Massachusetts website, and, and I looked at what the tax rate was for Adams. And North Adams and Adams, not the tax rate, the tax bill, the actual average tax bill, North Adams and Adams are within the same ballpark. Adams' average single-family tax bill is $3,472. And the mayor is proposing tonight that the North Adams' single-family tax bill be $3,400. So that was my comment, so that in my response to both Counselor Bona and Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Olefskowitz.
Now I will formally withdraw my motion to adopt.
Okay. So we have another motion on the table?
I make the motion that we forward this to the Finance Committee with, how fast do we need to get this through? Like, is there a timeline, like, within return date of the next meeting?
Second.
Discussion on that. Mayor.
Two comments. I introduced this tax classification hearing two weeks ago, and I really wish if there was that much concern about where we were with the commercial, that somebody had talked to me about that. That's my comment. My second thing is, I'm all for taking it to Finance Committee. I'm all for more discussion. But I wish we had played that out before tonight. And we ought to get moving here, folks, because we got to get those tax bills out.
I know. I totally understand.
And my, my last question, and then I'll behave myself, President Blackmer. When are you going to have this Finance Committee meeting?
Well, the problem too is that we've also got the Monday, next week's shop. People are, well, not next week, I'm sorry. Next week. I know people are away for part of the week. On the week of Thanksgiving, obviously, we've got a meeting on a Monday. No, it's, I'm sorry, no, we don't. That's the 28th. That's afterwards, so that. I mean, we do have a limited time because of the holiday. But if you can call a meeting, what's today? Oh, Monday's a holiday. I'm sorry, tomorrow's a holiday.
Friday's a holiday.
Friday's a holiday, so we'd have to post a meeting tomorrow for a meeting on Tuesday.
Make it so.
So we'll do it?
Yep, do it.
What's the date? 15th?
Tuesday?
Tuesday the 15th?
Sixteenth. Today the ninth, yeah.
Today's a Wednesday, though.
Fifteenth.
We're all screwed up.
No, I'm not here on Tuesday.
You're not here on Tuesday?
Hmm. Tues- Tuesday's the 15th.
He's not here.
I just, I let the mayor check her schedule.
I'm trying. I just can't see.
No, I know. I want people here needing my help.
Can we do the 14th?
Mm, we can't post it anytime.
Can't count.
Can't count Friday.
Oh, that's right. It's a holiday.
Not unless we have it at nine o'clock at night, then we can, because we got 15 minutes to post it.
Yeah, right now.
Can we do the 15th at five, or 5:30?
What day is that?
It's Tuesday.
I can't do Tuesday, unfortunately. I can't. That's the only day next week I can't do anything.
I'm not available again until the 22nd.
Which is what, the Monday before, the day before?
The day of our next council meeting.
Is everybody available on the 16th?
No, she's not available. Do we want to have the meeting at, have it at six o'clock before the City Council meeting?
No, that's not fair to.
Want to post there right now and?
And have it at nine o'clock at night?
You got time.
I'm not having a Monday, Monday nine o'clock meeting.
So, can I just say something? As much as I'm against this, if it is the council's pleasure, and I know you want to discuss more, but if it is at the council's pleasure to go to the 1.72 or whatever you're all thinking, can't we just amend?
Yes.
Begin.
And then, and then I say to you, I'm not happy with that. Very clear, I'm not happy with that. But as we move forward next year, we build into the timeline, coming in, introducing the classification, having a Finance Committee meeting, we had then having the hearing, and moving forward. Yeah. I'm willing to work with you, but I'm a little upset. That's all.
And Counselor Harpen has her hand up. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just didn't take it down from last time, so I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, I'm trying to pay attention. Okay, so what are we, did you make an?
I can rescind my motion.
So you're going to rescind your motion, so the motion would be?
To change or to amend. Mend?
I don't, let me look at the actual, how it's recorded. Ordnance to amend.
CIP to 1.72.
Oh, these are the minutes.
Oh, changing the language.
Does that affect the, I gotta, that's gotta change the residential rate?
Isn't that just an arbitrary number?
Well, we're trying to find a compromise.
It's an arbitrary number.
I'm just trying to find the actual.
Pick one, 1.68.
One, no, 1.72.
1.68.
The consensus is five.
That's the number I'm picking.
Point of order?
Okay, guys.
It's an arbitrary number. 1.72.
Point of order?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you didn't like.
We're trying to figure out what the motion.
We can pick the 1.72.
Could we have, could we post and have an emergency meeting and declare it an emergency?
This is not an emergency.
Setting our tax rate?
It is, because the building's not on fire. We've had time to do this. And we have time. All it means is, what it does is it also holds up printing the tax bills. And it's not like you're pushing a button, printing and stuffing 1,000 tax bills like I had to do. There's lots more to do than that. Um, so I do think, I'm just trying to find the actual ordinance title department grid. Mayors, time to publicly swear.
I just want to get the rate so you understand by putting it 1.72 where it's going to be for commercial.
And that's in our package.
Okay.
I think 1.72 would be a compromise.
So, so basically, you would, an order authorizing the mayor to establish the fiscal, so basically, we would say you move to establish the rate, the CIP at 1.72 would be the motion.
And then you have the chart that has the.
Yep. And then it has it here. It would make the tax.
It would make the, Jess, I need you, the residential $17.64 versus the commercial of 30, at 37.70.
Okay, because we don't, that's not on here, 37.70.
Is that my reading that right?
37.70. And it would increase the average tax bill 329.60.
Versus 294.56.
Correct. So about $35 more. So that would be the motion.
Want to repeat that?
Okay, the motion to adopt, or a motion to establish the fiscal year 2023 tax levy for residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property at a 1.72 split. Is what that the phrase is, a split? So.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on this.
It's an arbitrary number.
Thank you, Wayne. Counselor Wilkinson.
They're all arbitrary numbers. All numbers are arbitrary.
That's why it needs to go to Finance, so we don't just come up with an arbitrary number to say.
We had the details on that number.
I've seen the details. It's still an arbitrary number.
So was 1.68.
Right.
So was 1.75. So has all of the other ones you've ever voted on in the last 10 years you've been on the council.
I agree with you 100%. That's why it needs to go to Finance, so we're just not picking a number.
I, I guess that, Counselor Blackmer, that's my point. We've voted on this a million times, and my apologies to all of those members that are new. But my senior counselors, we voted on this, voted on this. This is all the process. I'm willing to work with you, and then you jam this down my throat, oh, I want to go to Finance Committee. Oh, I want more public input. I get it.
Oh, part of the, I mean, I'm sorry, but the election being late's kind of screwed things up, but yeah.
The snowstorm screwed my day up.
Oh, no.
Things screwed my day up, but you know what? I still come here prepared.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? So the rate is the 1.72 that many people felt was a compromise. This is a roll call vote.
Barbo? Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
No.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Olefskowitz?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
No.
Wilkinson?
No.
Blackmer?
Yes. I lost track. Doesn't carry, so we have no tax rates set, so.
So can we put it on the floor again?
You can keep putting it on the floor.
I don't have to be anywhere till the 16th of November, so let's go, folks.
I have PT tomorrow at eight.
Too bad. We'll take a recess.
I don't go to bed till 4:00 a.m.
So what's your pleasure? It went down. What do you want to do?
I don't know. I think the reasons, well, you know, I think Counselor Wilkinson probably not going to agree to any number because we're not discussing it.
That's correct.
I would say Counselor Harpen, you know, obviously she, and again, I'm not saying it's wrong or right. She stands by her opinion when it comes to the residential shift. I'm not sure, I guess I'd want to hear why some of the other no votes were, if it was, they're happy with what, where we were. Or they want to discuss it, because if they want to discuss it at a Finance Committee meeting, then we could talk numbers all night, and that's not going to go anywhere.
Okay, the other thing is, we can also call a special meeting of the City Council the first week in December, like, on the eighth or ninth that week.
It's really, it's really hurting our team.
I get it.
I know. You're a firm on tax.
Then they've done that, so.
Can I just make one more suggestion? If we're really hung up on going to the Finance Committee and having more discussion, I would ask Counselor Shade, would you consider maybe moving your IDA meeting to a different night? Or maybe we can meet after that? Because you're not available on.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'm not going to be available on the 14th until.
The idea meeting doesn't get over to 7:30.
7:30, 8 o'clock. I'm not, I have another meeting.
Wait, hold on. The issue isn't the idea meeting. The issue is posting public notice.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right. Friday's a, Friday's a holiday. That's right.
Yeah, unfortunately, the holiday is what's throwing us off.
Just a suggestion. Counselor Bona, I don't know your schedule. What, could we meet early Tuesday morning? But that doesn't really help the public that's have to work, like, 6:00 a.m.?
I can be there.
I know you could, Counselor Wilkinson.
I can be there.
You're just, you're still awake.
So you're back the 22nd. You can meet before the council meeting.
Through the chair, if I, we don't have a motion, so can we be discussing at this point?
Put somebody put a motion on the table for something, then.
I move to send up Finance.
Second.
So through the chair, I, just so we have an idea, some I, I think we know why, but counselors have voted no on that. I just would like to hear your reasonings. Not that you have to, but I think it might be helpful knowing how we need to move forward with this.
Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair, Counselor Bona, the reason I voted no is because I agree with Counselor Wilkinson. We need to have full discussion and actually have some time to look into the numbers, see how it's going to affect people, and hear from people in the community. Their voices need to be heard, too. And I get that they've had the opportunity to do that tonight. But given the differences of opinion and the drastic amounts and rates that were proposed, I think it's really important that we have another opportunity for public feedback, along with an opportunity to look at everything together with the mayor to make sure that we do what's best for everyone in the sitting. Thank you.
That's fair. Like I say, that tells the, doesn't matter what number we throw out. It's, you know.
So we're looking at the 22nd at 6:00 o'clock? Seems to be the only time that's going to work. I'm sorry, guys.
Can I, can I just mention something?
Yep.
I'm not sure if he saw my hand or not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I would just like to mention, I, I know we're trying to figure out what, what everyone's schedule is so that everybody can go to the meeting and have some info. I think it's important as well. That was part of my vote. I, I think it's, we, we need to have this. Um, that was part of my vote. Um, I, I think it's, we, we need to have this discussion. We haven't had it since I've been on the council, so I, I am looking forward to it. But we, we do have other avenues of, of attending meetings. You know, you can call in. We, we have Zoom. I'm currently out of town, out of state for work, and I'm able to call in, um, through Zoom. I'm, I'm not able to interact, but I'm, I'm able to, to speak and, and still participate, um, in, in this city council meeting. So there are other avenues that can be used. You don't have to physically be there.
Correct, but if people are out of town on vacation plans, or on flights, or traveling, it's kind of hard to do that, and I wouldn't expect someone with a planned vacation to have to be at a meeting. And it's not just, it's the finance committee and the administration staff that are the key people to have at that meeting. And as the chair, um, I think it's pretty important that Counselor Bona be there. Counselor, I'm sorry, Mayor?
I got downgraded.
No, you got promoted.
I know, promoted. I don't know. Um, I will offer, thank you, Counselor Harpen, for making that recommendation. To keep it moving, provided I arrive where I'm supposed to be, I would entertain that I could be available Thursday night, the 17th. If that helps. I'm still not happy.
Is your staff available, too?
They will be.
They will be. I'm available. I mean, okay.
Brian?
17th at this point is open for me.
It's Thursday.
Yeah, that would be open for me.
I made the motion that we move this, uh.
Oh, we have a motion. We're just coming back with the date certain.
Oh, okay. Um, so then we amend that, make amendment that we, uh, have a date, or that we're going to meet on the 17th. Well, actually, we said the next meeting, anyway.
Right, it's going to come back to the next meeting.
So the date doesn't matter.
No, we were just trying to make sure we could do it.
Okay.
Or we'd have to wait. Um, could we get that PowerPoint presentat, that presentation? Because that had some information that wasn't in our packet.
Sure.
So that would be helpful. Counselor Shade?
Yes, one last thing before we vote. Um, I do want to take a moment to thank all of you for being here, for putting all this work in, and for coming to another meeting to help us understand and help the community understand more on how this is going to work. Really appreciate your time and efforts, and I just wanted that to be acknowledged, so thank you.
Um, Counselor Harpen? Okay, did you just leave your hand up?
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer to finance and have this back at the next meeting, which is the 22nd. Um, we will be meeting, that's not part of the motion, but we'll be meeting on the 17th in person, and there will obviously be Zoom options.
And what time would that meeting be?
What time do you want that meeting?
5:30?
Sure.
5:30, okay. Okay, any more on this? So roll call vote.
Barbo? Barbo?
Move on. I can't see.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. I have lost track of where we even are. Um, I know where we are.
Do you want to mute that, whatever's coming through?
Yeah, there's some feedback. Oh, there.
Somebody left the water running.
Okay, I'm going to move up, um, council paper 12,00189, Mayor's Communication 109, requesting time for Judy Grinnell of the Housak River Revival to provide a presentation about the pending funding and flood control modernization project. Mayor?
At the counselor's pleasure, because of the time, um, we are willing to postpone this paper to another meeting if necessary, or we can continue.
It's up to you. I mean, I know you came and you showed up, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're happy to do it, but I know everybody's tired.
I know, and we've got, I don't know how much the rest of the stuff's going to take.
Totally the counselor's pleasure. We're here.
I'm interested. I mean, I don't want to speak out of line.
Counselor Alaskowitz, Counselor Wilkinson.
We're here. Ms. Grinnell did make the effort to come here and did sit through this, so I think we owe her the honor to give her presentation.
Okay, go ahead. The paper's there. Presentation's up. Half of it's getting the technology going.
I do want the vote for the blurring order fixed, though, before we go home tonight.
Yeah, we're doing that.
Thank you.
It's on here.
We screwed up the blurring order.
Can you please ask if she can send us the PowerPoint, because I can't see it. I'm, I'm wondering if she could just send it to all the city councilors so that we can share it.
Give me the afterwards.
I have a folder for all of the counselors, including people who aren't here, with pictures of the slides.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Oh, I just made it so it's like a.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank, sorry. Uh, I'm going to have to just fist a little bit here.
Want to move the podium over a little closer?
No, it's okay. No, I want this on this side. That's all. I'm very right-handed. Okay, so, um, thank you very much. And thank you, counselors. I will promise, uh, this will not have one number in it. It's just going to be pictures. So you're all, are you ready? Okay, so on behalf of the Housak River Revival, I thank you for this time. It has been a while since we've been here. I'm really delighted to be back. This is going to be a combination of a quick history of the Housak River Revival, because so many of you are new to the council and have not seen any of the three previous presentations that we've done. So it'll be a quick history, and then the mayor and I together will talk with you about the feasibility study. So, uh, I'd like to say, first of all, how pleased I am to, not only to be here, but to tell you how rewarding and helpful it is to be working with the mayor so closely. It has, it has really been a pleasure, and it has been very useful to our organization. Together, we're a really strong team, and we're making every effort to create a system that will protect the city and at the same time, make the Housak River the center of life in North Adams. So, here we go. How did it happen that we're already here? Note the map. Two branches of the river, from the north, the Eclipse Mill, going to Mass Moka, coming up from the south, from Foundry Road, to the confluence with Moka. 2.5 miles of a mostly concrete, channelized river. This project, to restore the river and to save the city from flooding, began with a group of people who had a dream for the city, but none of us, not one of us, was an engineer or a city planner. We had to learn from experts if that dream could come true. From 2009 to 2018, we raised money, hired river restoration specialists, shared whatever we learned over the years with over 25 local organizations, churches, political groups, state, federal, and local city leaders like you. Some we visited several times as we learned more and more. So what is it that we did learn? One thing, the river, sorry, the water in the river, sorry, the water in the shoots. I'm a little tired, is totally unhealthy for wildlife and our cold water-loving trout. Some visitors even think we have a sewer running through our city. We still need to have the walls. We are going to need the walls. I'm saying that twice, because so many people think that lady is going to tear down our walls. We're not doing any such thing. We are modifying them, but the walls will need to be here in several places. Five, however, five of the wall panels, 20 feet wide panels, have fallen, and seven of them are leaning. The most recent fallen wall is right there at Mass Moka at Building 6. The Corps of Engineers has informed us, quote, "Your system has outlived its useful life." So we've also learned, and this is a picture of where all those fallen and leaning walls are. You'll note they're mostly on the north branch. That part of the river comes in fast and steep. So in 1950, though, interestingly, the city signed an agreement with the Corps that it would be responsible for all repairs and maintenance. More than 600 million in property assets on the north branch is threatened by serious flooding, along with our precious Mohawk Torrel Bridges and several Defense Department industries. The city agrees that indeed, something needs to be done. In the Hazard Mitigation Plan and in the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, city shoots, falling of the city shoots would be catastrophic. Flooding is our number one risk. So that's a lot of bad news. This is our motto. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world or change a river. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has, and that keeps us going, because we also have good news. Look what some cities have done within a wall. This is Denver, Colorado, a bike path, and what in the middle is called a low-flow channel. Kansas City, concrete, but attractive concrete, steps down to the river. Back to Denver, they are, we use them as a model. They have been at this for 25 years. It's a berm similar to ours, but it's at a graduated level so that people really can get into the river. Whoops, sorry. And this is Greenville, South Carolina. It has steps, but steps going down to a sidewalk, and then more, more rock, and you can go into the river if you want. We also asked our engineers, okay, that's great. What can we do? This is one of our early, and by the way, these are conceptual plans. Nothing, nothing has been decided. These are just ideas to help us and you take a look at what the options might be. So this is one on the south branch. You'll notice it looks basically the way it is, but behind some of those businesses, the long Route 8, we would have a low-flow channel for people to be able to get access to the river from those four playing fields. This is a more current one. This has a meander so that it might change the river. Two of the ball fields would be inside that cul-de-sac. That would be a bike path along what is now our berm. And this is on the north branch. We have also, uh, we also have studies done of the north branch. This is Will O'Dell, a little bit different design. Our engineers see this as having a lot of potential. Outdoor, it would be within, within the, again, I call that a cul-de-sac, um, Will O'Dell. Access for kids down to the river, um, outdoor dining. We have some, a building left there that could be a restaurant. We could have a tourist center welcoming people into the city. Important, too, to note, oh, wait, I don't want to go there yet, um, is that the Massachusetts Department, this is a number, I'm sorry, I promised pictures, but the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game recently reported that restoration projects promote economic development and recreational opportunities. We've seen that. They say that restoration projects generate total economic outputs equal to or greater than any other types of projects, like bridges and transportation roads. And for each $1 million spent on Massachusetts restoration projects, they produce an average employment demand of 12 jobs, and in total economic output, 1 and 3/4 million for every 1 million spent. So with all this information, Mayor, would you join me now?
Absolutely.
So.
A happy mayor will join me.
So the reason I ask her to come is, I have showed you basically Housak River Revival history. For the last year and a half, we have been working more closely with City Hall, first with Tom Bernard and much more closely with, uh, Mayor Maxi. And what we have done with all those facts, figures, pictures, we submitted an application, we, the city and the Housak River. The city signed it because they are the ones responsible for the repair and maintenance. So any, any request we make for the federal government to do anything has to come from the city. Uh, together, we worked on an application asking the Corps of Engineers to do what's called a feasibility study. And we were very lucky. Not everybody gets accepted, but we have been accepted. So you've learned a lot from her two weeks ago when you voted that 100,000, sorry, $500,000 to help pay for the feasibility study. So let's look at some of the details. It takes three years for the Corps to look at our 2 and 1/2 miles, assess exactly what might be done. The cost to do that is $3 million. Three, one, one and a half paid by the federal government and one and a half paid by the city, but we know that a one and a half million is a big chunk. And here I go, I didn't, I said no money. Well, here I am. But we've asked, the state, our state delegation is working night and day to get $1 million from the state to help the city pay its share. And we are working very closely with Representative Neal and Senator Warren and Senator Markey, and they too, they've been focused until today on the election. Are now going to be on the phone tomorrow. What the heck is going on? So what else? What are we going to do when we meet with the Corps? First of all, I want you to know that it is a team effort. We're going to have a city team, and we'll have a Corps team. And we're starting out with what we call a, uh, call to action. The Corps asked us, what do you want done? So the Housak River, in concert with City Hall, has come up with what we call a call to action. Those are the four key things that we think probably ought to happen. But the Corps process requires community involvement. The mayor and I aren't going to make this decision, nor is anybody else on the city team, nor is the Corps. It's going to be information, some that we already learned from the community during the last 14 years, but some that we've learned, we will learn together, and the city team will just sit down. And the city team will just sit down and be part of the discussion of what exactly is going to happen. This is, and therefore, the Housak River is again trying to raise money to have a neighborhood-to-neighborhood outreach. Everybody is going to have an opportunity to tell us what they want the river to look like, what you're, what they're scared of, people have said they're scared, what they want to have for fun. And with that information, this call to action that we have, we have a draft of it, and it's in the packet that you all are going to get. It is a draft, and it will be modified as we go through this community process over the next eight to 10 months. I'm going to leave you with a picture. Some of you may remember that. 2009.
Was that long ago?
Lights across the river, the back, along river street, and no music, no food, nothing but lights. Anybody remember how many people came downtown?
It was packed.
Yes. Any number?
Couple thousand.
Thousands.
Close. 2,000. 2,000 people came downtown. To me, that is a clear message that the people who live here want something to happen with the river, and it's going to happen. So I thank you very, very much for your attention, your time. It's been a long-term, challenging project, but we're closer than ever to really seeing it happen. So thank you very much. Questions? Comments?
Thank you for your time, and Counselor Bona.
Ms. Grenell, Judy, you know, I'm glad to see your sort of the face in front again. I know you, this was your baby at the beginning. You've developed it, obviously with other people in a group, but.
Absolutely.
Right.
Some of them right there.
Yeah, and then, and I think you tried to step aside a little. It seems like every time you come back, it seems to get that energy back. So I'm glad to see your collaboration with the mayor. And I've been excited about this from the beginning. I mean, I know it's a big project, and it's nothing that's going to happen tomorrow, but thank you.
Counselor Sapienza.
Yes. I like the conceptual drawings of the various locations in the North Adams, in the city. I also see a lot of potential with Mass Moka, the river around Mass Moka, the Marshall Street Center, the Freewayard Park and that area. I see a lot of potential down there, and I look forward to seeing some of these things come to fruition at some point in the future. And I believe that we can, if everything goes according to plan, we can make this right. We can, we can make that river a real asset for our community. Thank you.
That's our hope.
Anyone else? I want to thank you again, Judy, for bringing.
Okay, thank you all. We'll be in touch.
And if anybody has any follow-up questions, you know, can you contact Judy?
I'll get your folder, folders to you.
Excuse me, will you have a question over here?
Can you wait, why don't you wait to, because it's a presentation. Usually you ask questions, the things are at the end.
I live here. You can call me. I live here, you may call me. I will give you information so you could call me. Okay? All right?
Thank you.
Or we'll have coffee. We can have coffee.
Well, you have to talk up a little bit if you want to have coffee with me.
Okay, was this past or is that a reading? Okay, let's get back into this.
Thank you.
So we just have to.
Counsel paper 12,156, an ordinance to amend Chapter 8, Section 22, Section 22, entitled "Department of Public Safety Regarding the Qualifications of Police Officers." It was voted to, it was passed to a second reading and published as required. So now it's just the ordinance we're voting on. So a move to adopt would be in order.
Motion to adopt.
Discussion? This is a roll call vote?
Oh, Counselor Barbo left.
Okay.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
No. Seven yeas, motion carries. Counsel paper 12,157, an ordinance to amend the title of Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Article 5, Stopping, Standing, or Parking Generally, Section 13-49, Regarding Parking Prohibition on Certain Streets. This was passed to a second reading and published as required by law. So this is, a motion to adopt would be in order.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Counselor Sapienza, Counselor Shade. Any discussion on this? Counselor Bona?
Through the chair to the mayor. Again, I support this, but as everything else, it's going to come down to enforcement. That being said.
Thank you.
You know, it's still an issue. You know, I, every night I've driven home, there's cars on the park, on the sidewalk. So we can't enforce those. It just, every time we add another thing, it just, I, I'm like, yeah, it makes sense, but if we can't enforce it, it's going to be pointless.
Point taken, Counselor. We're on the same page with that.
I know.
Okay, anyone else? We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Counsel paper 12,185, an order borrowing $500,000 for the city's share of a feasibility study regarding Housak River flood control. So we were supposed to pass to a second reading and publish. So we need to vote to rescind the October 25th vote. So a motion to rescind the vote would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Shade, Counselor Leskowitz. This is a roll call vote.
Bona?
This is to rescind right now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Harpen?
I'm, I'm not really sure why we're rescinding it.
Because we have to rescind it, because we have to redo it as a, as a, to publish as required by law.
Okay, so we just didn't do the motion correct. Okay.
Yep.
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes, motion carries. So counsel paper 12,185, an order borrowing $500,000 for the city's share of a feasibility study regarding Housak River flood control. This does need a two-thirds vote, and the motion would be to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Second.
Oh, wait, it was already published?
No, it wasn't published.
Okay, it wasn't because there's a note here, okay.
We need to pass.
Her note didn't make sense. Okay, thank you. Yep, so motion a second. Roll call vote?
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes, motion carries. Just making sure I didn't skip anything else in here. I moved around so much. Counsel paper 12,190, Mayor's Communication 110, A Proclamation in Support of Transgender Day of Remembrance.
I'd like to ask Counselor Shade to join me today. It's for you, my friend. So the proclamation acknowledging transgender day of remembrance, November 20th, 2022, whereas all persons deserve to live in the city that respects their dignity, safety, and overall well-being by supporting equality and fair treatment of everyone, and whereas every day transgender persons bear the brunt of social and economic marginalization due to discrimination based on their gender identity or expression, and whereas transgender persons continue to face high levels of discrimination, stigma, and bias that can fuel abuse, violence against the community, and whereas our entire community is diminished when we lose the talents and contributions of many members of our community prematurely, whereas transgender day of remembrance helps bring public awareness to anti-transgender hate crimes and honors the memory of those hurt and killed by acts of anti-transgender violence each year, and whereas North Adams residents are encouraged to observe this day and to honor the lives who have lost because of the census violence, and as we move forward together in this proclamation of acceptance and understanding. And now therefore I, Jennifer A. Maxi, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do hereby proclaim November 20th, 2022, as transgender day of remembrance, and call upon residents to acknowledge the lives lost in violence against transgender persons and to acknowledge the work of activists, advocates, and allies working to secure equal rights and affirm the freedom of all people to live openly, honestly, and safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Shade. Counsel paper 12,191, communication from Counselor Shade requesting local Department of Health review the rules and regulations to address the storage of garbage. Your letter suggested that we refer this to the Board of Health, so that motion would be in order, and then you can talk about your letter.
Yes, I'd like to move that this be referred first to Public Safety and then to the Board of Health.
Public Safety Committee or Public Safety?
Public Safety Committee.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, just explain that order again. You want it to go to Public Safety and then, or?
Yes, and the reason to go to Public Safety first is for public to be able to comment on it before sending it to the Department of Public Health to review.
Just a suggestion would be to actually invite the Department of Public Health to the Public Safety meeting.
And the enforcement would fall under the Department of Public Health, so.
It would.
Right.
Make more sense to have them, I mean, because the Public Safety Committee can have something, but they can't really, they're not the enforcement officer.
Correct. My thoughts, my thoughts around this, if it helps, and then we can kind of clarify, is in looking into this further, we have a major issue in the city, obviously, with rats and pest control, and one of the big reasons for that is improper storage of garbage, people not putting their trash in containers and leaving it out for pickup. The City of North Adams doesn't control or do any kind of pickup, and therefore, we don't really have control over the actual ordinances in regards to how trash should be stored. It gets left to the Department of Public Health because we're not the ones actually picking up the trash. So in my research in looking at MGL, Master Law, Part One, Section Title 16, Chapter 111, or it's Chapter 111, Section 31B, gives the power to the Boards of Health to make rules and regulations for the control and the removal, disposal, and transportation of garbage and other offensive substances. Our city ordinances have very little language, most of it's around litter, and that doesn't really cover the garbage so much, and so I'd like for that to be reviewed. Having a rat infestation, it's a problem all over the state, but it does come down to a public health issue. Rats are known to carry diseases, and after surviving a pandemic, the last thing we need is a rat outbreak to spread more disease throughout the community. And so I think it's really important for us to look at this overall, get feedback, get feedback from the Department of Health, and ordain whatever rules they have in place for the city, leaving them as the responsible party to enforce it, but actually ordain their regulations in regards to this so that it's on the books and easier to find for all of the people, so they know exactly what the rules and regulations are.
Good.
Again, through the chair, my, my suggestion would be to have it go to Public Safety, inviting the Health Department to attend, because if the public brings up questions and they're not there, some of those answers they might already have or know or be aware of things they're going to do. So that would be whoever's running the Public Safety meeting is to invite the Health Department, and then it can go to the Health Department again if they want to give us more feedback. That's just my suggestion.
I would agree with that.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Just to keep things, sending it back to the Health Department is wonderful. I don't have, certainly have a problem with that, but shouldn't we propose that through the mayor since the Health Department is actually, she's asked us to come to her before we go to department heads?
Well, they're actually a board that's governed by state law, a lot of it.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were talking about our.
I think they're talking about our Board of Health, which is governed by this.
They still work for the mayor.
Okay.
It's okay?
Well, right, because we send things to the traffic commission without sending it to the mayor. I mean.
I'm, I'm not trying to make a big deal out of it. The mayor has asked.
You are being contrary tonight.
Pardon me? I'm being contrary?
Yes.
Oh, am I ever contrary?
Counselor Shade.
Arbitrator, that's arbitrary.
Through the chair to the mayor with your permission. Do you mind if we send this to the?
No, I just asked to be, I just asked to be carbon so I can make sure that we have available staff.
Absolutely.
You know, I think with poor Counselor Bona, we ran into vacations and things when you had meetings and we thought people were going to be there. I just like to assure that we have equal, we have representation, so we're not wasting our time and yours.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer to Public Safety and the Board of This is a roll, Counselor Alaskowitz.
It's being referred, but is there anybody, is Public Safety going to offer a return date?
What do we want a return date? First meeting in January?
I would say first meeting in January would be sufficient time.
First meeting in January. Roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Application, okay, so we're moving on to it. Application submitted by Patricia Brown to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for TT tax, OTT taxi.
Move to approve. Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Obasahan. This is a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Application, a motion carries. Application submitted by Terry Gera, Jera, to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Move to approve. Second.
Wilkinson and Sapienza. Roll call vote?
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes, motion carries. Application submitted by Tanya Kravish to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Move to approve. Second.
Wilkinson, Sapienza. Roll call vote?
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes, motion carries. Application submitted by Jean Rand to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Open forum. Anyone wish to address the council on an issue of municipal significance? Please approach the microphone, give your name and address for the record. No personal tax, and you have two minutes.
I'm Robert Smith. I live at 163 North Street. In 1959, I had to go to the register for the military service, and I was rejected for any of the military services, because they gave me a one Y classification, which meant that I had an eye condition that the military on any branch would not accept. A lot of my friends went into the service, a lot of my family members, and I kind of felt disappointed. The reason I'm bringing this up is I want to address all the veterans out there in our community, our city, our neighboring cities and communities, for their service to our country, especially on Friday. We can't forget our veterans. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul W. Marino of 70 VZ Street, and I'm sure that some of the council is aware that I'm a local historian, and for those of you who are not, I am, and I want to invite all of you to visit my website, paulwmarino.org. Make a note of that, please. And visit the page, Great Moments in Local History, where I guarantee there's enough local history to bore the entire family to tears. But while you're there on the website, remember, I'm also a writer, and I invite all of you to go to the fiction page and read the two most recently posted things. One is a book titled Pencils, and the other is my latest work of short fiction, which is especially apropos the way the world is going today, and it's titled Order. Thank you all.
Go ahead.
Paul Robert Cardamino, 173 Quincy Street. I would like to remind Counselor Bona, this city, over the years, has bent over backwards for this, to bring businesses into this city. They've given them tax relief, tax relief, five years and 10 years, and where's the thank you? And the older citizens of this community have paid over the years for taxes to keep this city afloat, when there were a lot of businesses closing and moving. And we still are doing a lot of things for the, anybody that wants to start a business, like if there's a, I, you know, a reason that somebody wants to put a business in a, in a residential section, they have allowed that. That's why Main Street is empty, because the businesses would move off of Main Street. When I was young, if you wanted to go to the dentist, it was downtown. If you wanted to go to, to a church, it was downtown. If you wanted to go to whatever, it was lawyers, downtown. That is no longer the case. So, you know, don't come crying poor-mouthed about, oh, the tax rate for the businesses. And, you know, if you are a, a person that owns a lot of apartments, when things happen, you just raise your rents, with no regard for the poor guy that's working for $12 or $15 an hour. I talked to one lady lately. She works in a supermarket, and she was, we got talking about the gas going up. The gas company, she pays $250 a month, every month on a budget, and she says, I never catch up.
You're over your two minutes.
So what do you want for this, this poor lady that's doing this?
Thank you, Mr. Cardamino.
And do you pay your employees
You're well over your two minutes.
Top wages?
Thank you.
I don't think so.
Anyone else wish to address the council?
Yes.
Name, address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is William D. Shanahan, 330 Church Street. I'm a student at MCLA, and apologies if I sound a bit nervous. This is the first time I've ever done this. I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank all of the city councilors and the mayor. This was a very interesting, thought-provoking meeting, and I think it was very productive, and I know that I will be able to speak to my friends at, back home, and discuss with them what happened. But I want to make a special thank you to the mayor for the communication regarding the transgender memorial, remembrance, sorry. I have a lot of close friends who are transgender at the school, and I have a special honor to tell them that they have a day in North Adams for them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor's updates.
Just one quick update. I don't know if all of you received an invitation from the American Legion for the Veterans Day Parade. We're going to gather at 10:00 and step off, I believe, at 10:30. So I'd like to invite the city council to join me, believe it or not, and also to join the public to come join us at the Veterans Memorial. Thank you.
And if it's rained out, it'll be inside, right?
It's not going to rain. It's going to be 60 degrees.
Okay, well, that doesn't mean it can't rain, but it means it won't snow.
How about it?
Let's see, we got committee reports in minutes, liaison updates, and counselors concerns. Counselor Shade.
Yes. Just a reminder, the ADA Commission is holding its next training session on Monday the 14th at 6:00 PM. If you haven't responded to the email that you're attending, please do so, so we can have a count. Secondly, I'd like to add that on November 19th, Saturday, the Brookshire Stonewall Community Coalition is hosting a Friendsgiving event at St. Stephen's Church in Pittsfield from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. It is open to all members of the public, and it is a potluck, so bring a dish, bring yourself. After that event at 3:00 PM, or sorry, at 4:00 PM, we will be having a Trans Day of Remembrance vigil, which we hold every year, also at St. Stephen's in Pittsfield. Thank you.
Anyone else? I want to remind every
Sorry. Yeah, the gentleman was in the audience earlier. He's gone home, but I just wanted to say thank you to Steven Warley. Many of you might have seen him this past week if you were driving Route Two, Route Eight, and he planted over 1,000 bulbs at the intersection over by Big Y and public, volunteered. It was sort of his zen thing to do. I do believe the city is helping pay for the bulbs, but he volunteered his whole entire weekend, this past weekend, which was beautiful, out there planting. So he's gone at the moment, but I think he's gone, right? I don't see him out there, but I wanted to thank him.
I want to remind everybody that I'm guessing you all saw the trees are up. I got to see it go down Route Two out my office window. It was great. So the tree lighting is set for the 23rd at 5:30. I know that's, we actually have a meeting before that, but that meeting's the day before, so people can plan. Like, two weeks to plan.
One more notice. This one's for someone else. The cemetery, they're taking down the flags this Saturday at 9:00 AM at Southview. Do not park in the ice skating rink, because there is a hockey tournament, so if you can make it down Saturday morning to Southview Cemetery, park in the cemetery, meet behind the skating rink, but don't park in the skating rink to take down the veterans' flags. Thank you.
I think that's it. No correspondence? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.